Hey Chief. Okay, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the City of Canton Council Meeting, September the 19th, 2019. If you would, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Goodman?
May we bow. Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for all that are here. We ask that you be with our city and just bless each one of our citizens. Help us to think strongly about what we decide at each meeting, especially tonight, and just be with us throughout the remainder of these years. All these things we pray in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, consideration to approve our agenda tonight. I will, we'll need to add an executive session to discuss litigation. Is there any other changes or additions that need to be made to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended with the executive session.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Goodman made the motion. Mr. Estes seconded the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay. Want to welcome our guest and visitors here tonight, and we have a special treat again this year. We're recognizing the, and presenting the proclamation to the nine and under Canton Stingers who are just phenomenal every year, it seems like. So, we are really proud to have them. And I have a proclamation that I would like to read and then ask them to come up, and we'll present the proclamation once we've read it. Whereas the nine and under Canton Stingers won the 2019 Dizzy Dean District Three Championship and the 2019 Dizzy Dean World Series, this is our third straight World Series Championship. We are the first team in Canton baseball to win three World Series. We are also the first team in Canton baseball to win a World Series in kid pitch and coach pitch. And whereas the nine and under Canton Stingers' five-year record is 144 and 22. Man, that's incredible, isn't it? Three Dizzy Dean State Championships, three Dizzy Dean World Series Championships, four Dizzy Dean District Championships, 22 tournament championships overall. And whereas it is a great honor that the City of Canton recognized the team players and coaches for all their efforts in such a successful game year. And whereas the team players are Drew Williams, DJ Virgil, Waylon Cantrell, Braden Fraser, Kason Gant, Jaden Hardaway, Brody Hazel, William LaBarbera, I hope that's right, Caden McGee, Brody Vance, Brendan, Brendan Dufour. The team coaches are Roger Gant, Paul Cantrell, Derek Williams, Michael McGee, and Rick LaBarbera. I think I messed that name up last year, too, you know. It's the same one, but I apologize if I did. Now therefore, be it resolved that IGH, Mayor of Canton, to hereby proclaim Thursday, September the 19th, 2019, as nine and under Canton Stingers' Day in the City of Canton. And I urge all citizens to recognize these team players and coaches for all their championship title wins. Congratulations, gentlemen. I mean, it's just incredible. And to think this has the Canton name on it, we all have to be very proud of that. (APPLAUSE). Okay, moving right along. We have the monthly and UCR crime report. Chief, Mayor Phil?
Good evening, Mayor. Counsel, Mr. Peppers. So, our total violent crimes is from the UCR report. For year-to-date, is up 40 percent. Was up 189 percent for the month. Most of that is going to be due to other assault simple, which is what we generally see in domestic violence situations. I would also think that probably we do tend to see more violence in the heated months of July and August. So, that has put us up to 40 percent year-to-date. For our total property crimes, we're up 20, I'm sorry, we're down 28.48 percent. And in all, our total Part I crimes and all that is reported, we are down 16.8 percent. Year-to-date, we're down 12 percent on our arrests. We're up 21.95 percent on DUIs. Our traffic accidents are .74 percent up for year-to-date. Our calls for service are up 6.45 percent for year-to-date. Our traffic citations are up 15.91 percent for year-to-date. And overall, our total contacts are down 6 percent year-to-date. During August, one of the issues that we had, one of the biggest issues we had was enterance autos in Canton Heights. We had 26 cases there, and also a vehicle stolen. All of those vehicles were unlocked. The, our detectives and our crime analysts met with a, the Cab County Task Force earlier this month. The Cab County has put together a task force for the gangs that are doing the enterance autos. The car that was stolen from Canton Heights was recovered into Cab County. And I understand also a car that was stolen from Pickens County in about that same time period was also found into Cab County. What our detectives have learned is from the, from the Cab County Police, that the suspects that they have caught and interviewed have said that the reason that they come further from the metro area is because people don't lock their doors. And that they're only going into unlocked cars. They did say that they would go into a locked car, they would break glass if they happened to look in there and saw something light, and preferably what they're looking for is guns. So, if they saw that, they may do that, but it's unlocked vehicles. And so, we're doing, we were in Canton Heights today for one of our community operations. We're doing it with our Facebook Live. We're trying to put out that you just, you have to lock your vehicles. Unfortunately, it's come north and we have to lock our vehicles. And that's why Cobb's not getting hit, and some of the metro areas are not getting hit as hard, because people naturally in the metro areas have been locking their cars for several years. So, we're trying to get the education out on the vehicles. And our detectives are also working, there's a couple of other strategies that I can't really discuss right now. Some technology that has come available that the GBI is involved with, that we can't really discuss right now, but they, it is a serious problem from the metro area. Forsyte's been getting hit, Pickens County's been getting hit, Cherokee County's been getting hit also. So, we're all working together in intel meetings monthly to try and address the situation. I think that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Anyone have a question? Anything? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Okay. I would like, before we move on with under, awakening guests and visitors, I would like to recognize Sean Toll in the back, who is here, who is, who is a, an incoming council member come January. Welcome and congratulations again. It's, he was fortunate, I mean, he came out good. He didn't have to campaign anymore or anything. So, it's, it's a great responsibility and an opportunity, and very rewarding to be a member of this council, I can tell you. And it's good to be able to be a part of the progress that the city can make. So, congratulations again, and welcome to the council after the first year. Minutes, you have the count, in your package, you have the council meeting draft minutes from September the 5th, 2019. Are there any changes or corrections to be made to those?
Motion to approve.
Do I have, second, okay. Ms. McGrew made the motion. Mr. Estes seconded that motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And this is a kind of a short, there's a 4-0 number now. I had that, one, two, four on us here instead of six. Okay. Ten-minute public input period, we have three. Richard Kemp, be the first one up.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. My name is Richard Kemp. I live at 970 East Main Street, Canton, Georgia. Did I do that right, Thomas? The reason I'm here over tonight, Mayor, it came known to me through phone calls and emails that there's a situation or an item on the agenda tonight about a moratorium on any building or building permits or annexations or anything else supposedly that they're going to be discussing and possibly voting on tonight. I don't know about that. I think it's a little short-sightedness that this wasn't brought to some type of committee or some type of discussion either with the council and the zoning commission, letting the public know that this was proposed to take place. In the proposal that I read, that said that they're going to, they want to put a moratorium on until April 15th of next year because they are pursuing funding for some road construction and/or the funding for improvements to the sewer treatment plant. My first question would be, what do we do if we don't get the funding? Does a moratorium go off? Does it continue on? How does it really change anything? I'm not quite sure that I understand that. The other thing that I'm really curious about, with the exception of one, all of our city council has been in office at least four to six years or longer. Why did this become a, something that we had to address immediately? When I came here 16 years ago, the population of the City of Canton was 10,000. At the town hall meeting that they had a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Peppers speculated that our population probably is in 30 to 35,000. Nobody really saw this coming with that type of growth we've had in the last 15, 16 years. Nobody was paying attention. Why wasn't it addressed before as far as the water treatment plant? The highway situation, as far as I know, we haven't really built any new roads in the last 15 years, but yet our population has tripled. Why now, all of a sudden, do we have to put a moratorium on a building or annexation where the other things mentioned in this? Because our road system can't handle what we have. When the master plan was done in 2000, did they not think about, we're going to need additional water system, sewer system, road system, school systems? They knew that the, that the city was going to grow, or they, I suppose, would not have approved the master plan. A lot of houses in that master plan between Great Sky, River Green, Soleil, and Laurel Canyon, that's a lot of houses. Nobody thought that maybe we need to do something with our infrastructure to get prepared for this over the 15-year period? I just think that, rather than this thing being discussed tonight and possibly voted on, that we kind of sit back and take a deep breath, and let's talk about this a little bit before we jump into some type of moratorium. To me, it has a bad connotation. It's like putting a sign out on 575 to people who may be interested in coming to Canton and doing business or building some houses, that Canton is closed until April 15th of next year because we're just not going to do any more business. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Leon Stafford.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. My name is Leon Stafford. I live at 205 Towering Peaks in Great Sky, Canton, Georgia. On this meeting's agenda is an item under new business that I would like to address, same as Richard, actually, but be more specific. I'd like to read it out loud so we can see it coming. The resolution reads, "A resolution of the City of Canton, Georgia, enacting a moratorium until April 15, 2020, to bar the acceptance of any applications for annexation, conditional use permit, master plan, master plan amendment, or rezone. Whereas the city council has concerns about transportation and traffic conditions in the city, and especially State Route 140, and whereas the city council is submitting for monetary assistance for roadway, roadway improvements, and should know if funding is approved prior to April 15, 2020. And whereas the city council has concerns about sanitary sewer capacity, and should receive 90 percent complete wastewater treatment plant upgrade plans prior to April 15, 2020." Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the city council of the City of Canton, Georgia, that one, the city does hereby enact a moratorium to bar the acceptance of any applications for annexation, conditional use permit, master plan, master plan amendment, or rezone. And two, the moratorium shall expire on April 15, 2020, or earlier, upon adoption by the city council of a resolution removing the moratorium, adopted this day of blank, blank, blank. I, I'm not fundamentally opposed at all towards reviewing master plans, reviewing our traffic forecasts and our wastewater forecasts. My problem is the moratorium. I feel the moratorium is somewhat heavy-handed. It gives a bad connotation on the City of Canton's feelings about oncoming business. Some of the questions that I had were, why not establish a working group of council members and planning and zoning committee to make these reviews? Why include the entire city in this scrutiny? Problems with State Route 140 are predominantly in Ward 1. Why include the other wards on the traffic and annexation issues? Regarding wastewater and water treatment, has the council, council ever seriously studied the possibility of merging water systems with Cherokee County? I know that's contentious, but that's something I think really has merit. Could we just, on the other hand, restrict permits when and if we reach wastewater capacity? These are just some of the ideas that, or thoughts or concerns that I had about this. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to pass out to the council an alternative resolution that I think might address the same things, accomplishing the same goal. So, rather than reading that and glazing any more eyes, I'll pass out the alternative resolution, and we'll see how it goes this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, thank you for recognizing me to speak tonight. I, too, would like to place two remarks, however neither of which are related to the address by the previous two speakers. First of which, I don't know if you are aware, but yesterday in our legal organ, the front page covered an article that was presented by, I believe, the editing manager of the Cherokee Tribune whereby the Sequoia Regional Library Systems Director, Ms. Anita Summers, announced that both the RT Jones Memorial Library here off Brown Industrial Parkway and the Woodstock Library would see a reduction in service hours due to the loss of City of Canton and City of Woodstock funding respectively due to the ongoing service delivery strategy mitigation. That results in a complete closure of the RT Jones Memorial Library according to the system on Sunday, which was indeed approved by the Cherokee County Regional Library Board in an emergency called meeting. If you recall during the budget process, which you adopted earlier in the summer, I made remarks of that, that were addressed by the city manager, and I do believe the city manager was quoted in that article also. I respectfully request of council that if it should be, if it should fall within council's favor upon the conclusion of the service delivery strategy meetings and finalization of the, any type of litigation or mediation that results from that, that council earmark any available car tax rental fees that may be appropriated pursuant to state law, percentages that are allocated under the budget that are available, or which, that may be available to, to basically fund again the library so that it could again have that Sunday service, at least for the RT Jones Memorial Library. Not so much for the Woodstock Library, that library's not here, but the RT Jones Memorial Library is in. So, I respectfully request that you take that into consideration. And also, later on the agenda tonight, you're going to be considering the restaurant district, the entertainment district here. I don't know if it's entertainment, I believe it's the restaurant district that we have. And that's set to expire on October the 1st, and I would ask that, because there's no council meetings between then and now, aside from tonight, that you consider whether or not it would be appropriate to introduce an emergency ordinance to extend that so that that can be considered, or if you would just allow that to sunset. I don't know what council's ambitions are on that because two members of council are not here tonight. But to the extent as whether or not that changes the math on that topic, I don't know, but that's something that I do ask that council keep in mind as council moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all we have in public input period, so move right along. Consent agenda. I will read each of these items, there's three items on the consent agenda, and if any member of the council would like, any one of those pulled off for further discussion will do that. Item A, approval of resolution to accept Iris Park subdivision Phase 2 street for city maintenance. B, approval of alcohol pouring license for rock and roll sushi located at 1548 Riverstone Parkway. Item C, approval of JUST FOIA program for open records request. These items are items that we have talked about extensively over the last couple of meetings or so. So, if anyone wants any pulled off, be happy to discuss, do that, and we can discuss it separately. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Mr. Young made the motion. Mr. Estes seconded that motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay. Okay. Under old business, discussion and possible action of the restaurant district ordinance to expire, which is scheduled to expire on October 1, 2019. So, who's handling that one?
I'll just chime in real quick. Just reiterate, my feedback and position last week was that we really should probably look at this under a broader review of alcohol policies and use it under the context of that. That being said, because of the feedback and the statistics that we received, that one, you know, it's not increasing crime, increasing trash, we also heard from, from business owners and members of the public as well in support of it. My proposal would be just to change the, or extend it one year, and not thinking that it would take a year to, to come up with a solution that would incorporate broader strategy for not only this ordinance, but other alcohol ordinances, and let that give us some time to be able to, to align around what, you know, ultimately we want to do in its entirety.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Young?
When this was, as I said at the last meeting, much has been made about the fact that I came into that meeting looking for some concessions and received them, and then ultimately wound up voting against it. And I have explained in this forum, which has not been properly shared to the public, I don't believe, that the reason I did that was because it became clear to me after, as the discussion continued, that there were many details that were not worked out, that basically the plan was just not ready to go, in my view. And just changing the date does not address any of those issues I had at that time. We have had a whole year for all of these things to be worked out, for anything that needs modifying to be brought back, to, for discussions to be had about how it was going, what we could do better, what we needed to change, what, and none of that has taken place. So, I, while I agree with Mr. Estes, this needs to be discussed as part of an overall overrevamping of our alcohol policies, which have needed work for a long time. I have not seen anything that makes me change my mind. In talking with the public, I still have the same mix of responses that I got the last time. Some people are vehemently for it, some are vehemently opposed to it, most people take it or leave it, and most of the time the response is, what's the big deal? Who would really want to do that anyway? So, I think there are occasions, like special events in certain locations, that may be perfect for this. I don't feel that it is the right direction for our downtown. One of the, I have heard more people requesting or mentioning family-friendly events than in this last year than ever before, which tells me that most people don't consider open containers without the restrictions of a special event to be family-friendly. And I have received quite a few, quite a bit of input from residents of, for example, Woodstock and Roswell that have, for quite a while, had this type of environment, and almost to a person, they say, you do not want to do this. I have had business owners in those districts tell me that they basically started closing earlier because they didn't want to deal with the people. I've had restaurant owners tell me that they- I've had restaurant owners tell me that they have had real problems with the people coming in that have been carrying their drinks around, not necessarily in Canton yet, but once you start, it continues to grow. So at this point, I don't see any reason to continue it because, I mean, we've had a few people, business owners say it helps, some say it hurts, some say it didn't do any, most say it didn't do anything at all. I think the statistics from the restaurants, absent a special event, the sales for this ordinance have been minimal, I mean, very minimal. I know when Mr. Peppers made his initial report on this in August, he actually said staff was recommending just let it sunset and maybe look at something else. I felt at the time, and I still feel, that this concept and this ordinance was rushed. It should have had a lot more discussion, it should have had probably its own committee working on it. It should have had a lot more details worked out before it was rolled out. Just for, as I got an example, the restaurants should have been part of this discussion and the only way I feel that something like this would really benefit other businesses is if the restaurants had a paging system. Yes, you can go, if you just walk in and don't make a reservation, you can wait an hour, hour and a half at a restaurant, but you're not going to leave if you don't have, they don't have some way to contact you when your table's ready. Just simple things like that. And also one of the things that I have been told by quite a few people is much like a smoking ban where people don't want to encounter out on the street cigarette smoke and all that, they don't want to encounter smelling and dealing with alcohol or people drinking. I mean, that's a certain segment of the population, yes, but that, they do exist. There's just taking all of this into account, I just, at this point, don't see where I can support extending this and at some point, if we can come up with a fully worked out plan, then I might be able to support, but not at this time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would just maybe add, so I think to the point that Mr. Young brings up, it'd probably be, I think, wise for us to think about, similar to what Mr. Kemp mentioned earlier. My, my concern is that we do activities that tell the broader community that we are closed for business. You know, the, I would challenge many of the statistics that you stated, you know, a lot of times, right, there's sample size and then there's population and, you know, one to three does not make a adequate sample size. I know for a fact, the night of the, or when we were debating all of the ordinances or the, this, this original ordinance over about a year ago, I mean, we had so many people that came out, both for and against, but there were business owners in downtown that, that were supportive of it. And again, and I would look to, you know, one big sample size that we had was our River Green Facebook page, right? I mean, how many people, I mean, you got lambasted on that page because of the feedback, you know, people thought you were a waffling and, and I guess, and my only feedback would be is the voters will, will make their voices heard in November.
Okay. Mr. Goodwin?
Speaking of the people who came out, we had four times as many people against as we had for it at that meeting.
It didn't live in the county, or it didn't live in the city.
It doesn't matter where they live, I didn't say that. I didn't, I didn't interrupt you, I appreciate you not interrupting me. You know, the other thing is you're involved in an alcohol business, we have a council on it is, and, you know, your stance is going to be different than somebody else's. This is the county seat. Those people have a right to do anything they want to, just like we have the right to go to even Roswell if we want to, but they prefer a family atmosphere and they came and said that. We had several people that came and said that kind of thing, but it didn't seem to make any difference. So I think, yeah, we should postpone this, but, you know, to a point, why? Why should we postpone? Why not vote on it tonight?
Is that your motion?
Yeah.
Your motion is what?
To carry it to a vote.
I guess, I'm not sure what.
Vote on this tonight if you, if you're going to sunset it or if you're going to continue.
So I guess we probably need one of those, don't we?
Well, you don't need a motion to sunset it, inaction eliminates it, so.
So your motion would be what exactly? I guess I'll try to figure out.
I thought we were, I thought we were to...
If you did nothing, it'll sunset. If you, I guess in order to continue it, you have to vote, would have to be a motion to continue, right? To, to extend it beyond for another year or whatever, that would be the motion and then we would have to vote on that, I guess, if, if that's the motion you want to make. Ms. McGrew, you have it.
Yes, Mr. Peppers, is Ms. Hardy here this evening?
She is not.
I don't want to put Ms. Thompson on the spot, so I'll ask you and, and you can confer with her, but I, the reason I, I use your name, Ms. Thompson, is you're out in the community as our communications director, but Mr. Peppers, what do you hear from the businesses and the restaurants in town? Are they having any hardships with this ordinance? Is it affecting anything with their business?
I sent an email out to all of the businesses downtown that have pouring licenses and I got a response back from two that represent a total of five of those establishments. And one of the questions I asked was, on a weekly basis, how many, how many of these cups do you have, you know, that are involved? And it's anywhere from 10 to 20 a week that are involved. I did ask the question, do you or your staff have any particular concerns or confusion as to how, how it's written? And the answer was no, but there is some confusion from the public because unlike some jurisdictions around us, ours is only for two days at certain times and some jurisdictions are longer periods of times or more days and so maybe there's not enough, maybe the public doesn't really understand when it's allowed and when it's not allowed, you know, but that's, we haven't had an inundation of phone calls, one way or the other.
So you mentioned affecting the restaurants. What about Beloved, a clothing store? What about the jewelry store and the insurance company at the end of the street? Do you hear from them at all? Do they, are they seeing an inconvenience or a disturbance because of it?
I, I really couldn't speak to that. I mean, I know Ms., Ms. Jones from Junk Groms was here last week or at the last meeting and she spoke, but, I mean, I haven't seen any, at least any communication to us, one way or the other.
Do you think they would complain if they had an issue? They're not shy.
Some would. There's always some that are more vocal complaining than others on any issue.
May I address Ms. Thompson?
Sure.
Ms. Thompson, have you received any communications from any of the business owners or employees in downtown such as attorneys in the insurance office that's in the corner by Panera, jewelry store, Beloved?
No, and I would say I'm probably not the best to speak to that. Our downtown development manager could probably speak a little bit better to what feedback has been, but I have not heard, other than Ms. Jones, any feedback.
I assume that you and she converse about things you hear, it would be on...
And I have not heard any negative feedback or positive feedback either.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Peppers.
I, I suspect part of the reason you might not have heard anything is because what retail businesses are open during the hours that this is actually effective now? I don't think the jewelry store would be, would it? I don't think most of the other, like Beloved and all those, I don't believe they would even be open at that time, so certainly they shouldn't have too much to complain about at that point. But anyway, anyone else?
I will say that since Nick mentioned it, yes, last year I did get a lot of extremely nasty comments from a small group of people that it took everything I had to stay civil and caused my family no end of stress and I have to say that I was deeply ashamed of my neighbors. Now, if they choose because of this one issue to make a change on this council, that is their right. If they choose not to look at an entire record and only choose this one issue because I disagreed with something they wanted, that is their right. But I do ask that they remain civil and that they do not personally attack myself or any member of my family again. That was uncalled for and out of line and it's just, has no place in this discussion.
Anyone else? Mr. Estes?
Yeah, last point, I guess I'd just reiterate that, you know, I think certainly people being uncivil is not appropriate, but I think, you know, the, a lot of the feedback I heard and, and I'll reiterate it because it is our constituents, particularly River Green, which makes up a good basis of our constituents, was we just felt like we weren't listening when we were voting against it or those that were voting against it. And so I just have to make that point on behalf of the majority of the people that did provide the majority of the feedback that night.
Okay, well, I don't think it's any secret how I felt at the last discussion and I haven't really changed my mind, even though I have, you know, looked at the evidence and it, it doesn't appear that there's any real negative result that has occurred as a result of this, but I don't know that there's been any positive results either. There's no evidence that it has increased business. I don't know that there's any evidence that it's, it's done anything positive or negative necessarily, okay? I don't think that it is conducive, once again, I think it's somewhat similar to the attitude that I believe the Marietta mayor and council had when they turned this same open container ordinance down for the Marietta Square area. You can't do that on the Marietta Square. But, you know, at one point I would like make, like I said, I don't know of any direct negative stuff that's resulted of this, I don't, but I can tell you this, if you look at the police reports and you look at DUI arrest, the period between June 18 and June 19, there were, it increased by 67%. Now that would encompass almost nine months of that period that, that we had. You can't say it had anything to do with those open containers whatsoever, but can you say it didn't? No, you can't. But you can't say it did and I wouldn't say it did. You know, sort of moot point as far as the benefits and the negative. I think the real, the real negative is the appearance that I see that it has to, you know, maybe young families coming in and, and maybe wanting to have dinner late or something and, and seeing a lot of, ultimately, and I don't think it's, it hasn't been a problem, once again, hasn't been a problem at this point, but ultimately I think it very well could be. And, you know, I have a lot of people on sidewalks drinking and maybe, you know, what, whatever that may lead to there, but anyway, that's, that's just how I feel about it. So I had to say that, so with that, I'll end, I'll end my conversation. Is there anyone else who will say anything?
Since we're unclear on the motion...
I don't think it ended up being one.
Then I'd like to make a motion to change the ordinance to extend it to October, what is it? Extend it to October 1, 2020.
Okay, we have a motion, just do, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
I believe with that, I also will vote no, so the motion fails. Okay, next up. Okay, let's see, discussion of possible action on proposed franchise fee audit by Georgia Municipal Association. Mr. Peppers, you handling that one?
Yeah, Mr. Ingram's not here. If you recall, there were two options the last time. The option for just the franchise study was $7,000, the option for the franchise year-long agreement to review all franchise agreements was $10,000. Staff would recommend that you do the $10,000 one and just have them review all of them at once and then we can turn around in the next year and if we don't, if we're not satisfied, we don't have to renew it for a second year, but at least have them review all of our current agreements with that annual option.
I, I think the comprehensible is the best way to go on that because it's not that much more money and I think would provide a lot more information to us. Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
I would agree. I think it seems like for the $3,000 extra, it's a better return on investment to go holistic and that's really where the, the benefit comes from, so motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Mr. Estes made the motion, Ms. McGrew seconded the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? All members voting for the motion. Okay. Discussion of possible action on resolution to submit an application for transportation, uh, transportation, oh, transportation spell wrong, I see that now. Transportation Improvement Project Solicitation for 2019. Bethany? Yeah, I think this is, this is what we've talked about, right? It's just an application to get it into the pipeline.
Yes, sir, it's for an application to submit for the transportation improvement program as well as the 20% match commitment from city council. And I can answer any questions that you may have about those projects or about the resolution.
And I believe, I believe you indicated that would be maybe June next year before we would know?
Yeah, it says quarter two, 2020, so it could be from April to June.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Ms. McGrew made the motion, Mr. Young seconded the motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? All members voting for the motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion of possible action, the planning commission recommendation for case MP 1907-002, Chris McCurry requests to amend the master plan to allow multiple family in Pod E, Riverstone. We probably need to discuss that one along with E, which is the conditional, conditional use permit at the same time there, so carry on.
So this is one that we heard two weeks ago. It was heard as a public hearing by a council. Planning commission heard both of these cases in August and for, they recommended approval for the master plan amendment, they also recommended a... I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Uh, Ms. McGrew?
Would, would you remind me again, please, of the price points of these units?
Um, I don't, Mr. McCurry, what, the price point? Market rate is between 850 and 1150.
850 and 1100?
1150.
And these will be age restricted units?
55 and up.
55 and up. 55 and up. Awesome.
Anyone else have a question?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion, Ms. McGrew, Mr. Estes seconded the motion. Yeah, this is for both, both conditional use permit as well as the change in the master plan?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussions or questions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no?
No.
Uh, all members voting for the motion, with the exception of Mr. Goodwin. Okay, okay, we're on item F now, I believe. Yeah. Discussion of possible action of mill on the Edouard Master Sign Plan. That's one I think we've talked about a couple of times as well. You want to add something to that?
No, this is just an addendum, different from the one that you recently approved. Just want to clarify that the historic preservation recommended approval with the following conditions, and I'll list those three off, that you limit each tenant to a maximum of 75 square feet of signage, the wording and in accordance with the sign regulations of the city's Unified Development Code and Canton Historic Guidelines be added to the statement of B1 on page 0.4, and for to comply with the historic district guidelines and limit plastic, vinyl, and/or acrylic signs out of the master signage plate.
Okay. Any question?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do we have a second?
Is that with those conditions or without?
With those conditions, sorry.
Motion with the condition, is there a second?
Second.
Can Ms. Estes make the motion, Mr. Yawn seconded that motion, any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? All members voting for the motion. Discussion of possible action on renewing waste management, sludge hauling, and disposal contract. That's another one that we've talked about several times, and, and the, the increase seems quite phenomenal to me on the surface, every one year, I just, how do they, how do they really justify that increase? Because you know where they dump didn't change that much, did it?
It's, it's, it's going on throughout the state, and unfortunately, it's really, we're at their mercy.
Unfortunately, why?
As I say, we're at their mercy, we have no other place to take it. We've, we've approached other landfills and they were even more. I think we looked at one in Gordon County, and they were up, over a hundred, around a hundred dollars a ton.
So, so, didn't it go up like, like three or four times?
It went from $33 a ton to $80 a ton.
Yeah, almost three times.
It appears that most of it's related to changes in EPD restrictions.
Yeah, there's a lot of conditions that, that have resulted from failures at the landfills, taking in too much of this moist material, and so they, they're, they're really clamping down on, on that, so.
And I, I think in addition to that, there's been some, some changes to state regulations that have cut down on the amount of the material that can be used in agricultural, and so you're starting to see more and more going into the landfill, which is causing them more headaches in trying to meet their EPD requirements.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's part of the big reason for the increase.
Anyone else have a question or comment?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
What's our challenge?
On the average, right now, we're probably doing, with our, with one press, probably in the order of about 400 tons a month. With our, when we run in two presses, which is temporary, we're probably pushing 650 a month.
Is there a drying apparatus that we could purchase ourselves and dry our sludge to cut out?
We've been looking, we've been looking at it, and I think we have found one that will probably incorporate into this expansion, but right now, we can't, it's, we have no space and to work with right now.
So that apparatus could be incorporated into the expansion use?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, well, that's optimistic.
Just a statement, we said it was about 200,000 or so, right? Last week, I think Mr. Ingram said that, that's what we're spending annually.
I think Nathan budgeted 250, 200, somewhere around there.
Yep, okay.
And, well, that 250 was based on what we're currently doing, I think we said it was going to be closer to 750.
Yeah.
Well, let's say 12, let's see, what are we talking?
It's almost three times, whatever we're spending now.
Yeah.
So that's 250,000.
Yeah, so, well, I'm pulling up my notes from the last meeting. Yeah, it was three times, so basically, I think it was an increase of 250 to 750 was what it was going to take in the budget to cut out. And that, now, having said that, that is if we cannot produce during that time any drier material that could go somewhere else.
Let me, let me ask you a question, it's kind of a side note here. Sorry about that. Have, have we had any complaints in recent times about odor from that plant, that area?
Yes.
I mean, I haven't heard any, to me.
Every now and then, it'll come up, but I can tell you, it's not necessarily from the sludge, it's more from the headworks and the, and the grit and screenings, that's where you get your odors, not so much from the digester and the, and the sludge hauling operator.
Even from the head, headworks there, have, have we had complaints recently?
Um, every now and then you'll get one, but, I mean, to me, I haven't had any personally, but every now and then, you'll drive by and get some.
I would say, you know, I had, I had gotten an email earlier this week from Mr. Goodwin with a complaint, and, you know, I drive through there in the mornings, and I, this particular week has probably been the worst that I've seen driving through every morning, but to, to combine with that, some of that, in talking with Spencer, may be some atmospheric things, because if you've come up 575 perhaps this week, the smell at the chicken plant has also been significantly stronger than it has been in other weeks, and so, when you have those periods with either high humidity or, or what have you, that, whatever odors up there tends to hang down at, at street level a little bit more.
Well, you know, I've been paying more attention to this for the last 12 years, and I'll tell you, it's the worst this week has ever been. I almost threw up, I tell you, it was really, really bad, and it's became, it wasn't just, usually this last, like, from the high school to the bridge, but this thing was going all the way up to the Rock Barn and all the way almost to Williamson, so I thought, boy, Williamson's going to be having a slow week this week, because it would just about make you throw up. I had a lot of people calling me, said, I thought you guys fixed this. Well, we did, and years ago, we masked it with some kind of spray, and at least helped it, but this was terrible, it's the worst I've ever smelled.
I, I would say that, in general, I think we've received probably less concerns this year and last year from the public, and I think a lot of that has to do with the way the school operations have changed over there. We used to get more phone calls from high school parents when they had the trailers that were right there up against the plant, and now that they've moved into the old Canton Elementary with Cherokee North, the complaints seem to have gone down more in general, but, like I said, this past week, I've noticed it a little bit more, and I reached out to Spencer and asked him if there were any specific changes to our operations, or if something wasn't being picked up on time by our sludge hauling, and his response to me was that operations are exactly the same, that his opinion is it's probably more an atmospheric issue in the last week, and he also mentioned that as dry as it has been over the last month, that that kind of compounds the situation as well, because the system just tends to stagnate more.
Mr. Yawn, you hit something? Oh, no, okay.
I was just saying that I have also received recently complaints.
Oh, well, I hadn't, I hadn't heard anything, and, and usually I will hear something, but, and I hadn't noticed it just driving by, probably at a different, different time, but I had not noticed it, and I just kind of wondered if that was still a problem there, so apparently, apparently still some issue there. Anyone else have any question about the, this issue? Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, is there a, and there's a second, Mr. Estes, Mr. Yawn seconded the motion, any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? All members voting for the motion, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, discussion of possible action of the 2019 L-MIG paving project, Mr. Hooper.
He, he's, he's not here tonight, I told him I'd be able to answer any questions.
Well, I think we've talked, we talked about that extensively at the last meeting, and I think everyone was kind of on board with any, any questions about that. Mr. Goodwin made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Yawn seconded the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? Okay, discussion of possible action on the updated gun slash article storage policy. Anybody want to talk about that, or you just want to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
I got a motion.
Uh, Mr. Estes made the motion, Mr. Goodwin seconded the motion, any other question or discussion? Mr. Pepper?
I would make one comment, we're not going to sign this until we actually get the locker in the other facility, and so, you're basically approving it, giving us permission to enact the policy, but we won't enact it until the lockers are actually in.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Sure.
Have you found a location that works well for those?
We're still working on it.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? All members voting for the motion. New business, discussion of a resolution for a moratorium until April 15, 2020, to bar the acceptance of annexation, conditional use permit, master plan, amendment, or rezoning Ms. Wilson had to be out of town, so she's not here. Ms. McGrew, you want to handle that one?
Sure, thank you. As we know, that development took a huge pause right around 2008, 2009, and it's ramped back up. We need to understand that a, a property owner has a right to develop their property however they see fit as it meets the zoning requirements. We've had a lot of applications submitted for dwellings, especially in Ward 1, and we feel like 140 is inadequate, it's reached a dangerous point with pedestrians on the sides of the road, and Ms. Wilson and I have concerns about the capacity of the water treatment, and how near are we to capacity? What has already been approved, when it's in the ground? How close does that bring us to capacity? And while it looks like, from my neighbors who are complaining that we're developing nonstop and approving everything, I hope that everyone understands that these things were approved 20-plus years ago, and now have the right to develop their property from the previous approvals. What I would like to accomplish with this is a pause, where we as a council, take our master plans for these large communities that are multi-use, take our master plans and compare those with our 2040 land use plan, make sure that the zoning that's on the books now fits with the direction that Canton wants to go. Do these zonings fit with our 2040? Do we still want these mega conglomerate, multi-use developments? While they're appropriate for areas maybe like Alpharetta Town Lake, Canton might be a little bit more sedate now, we didn't get the Northern Ark nor Canton West, and that's what these big developments were going to feed into, and we don't have that. It's an effort to take a step, put our heads together, do some extra work, go through these reports, and adjust our zoning where we can, and adjust our plans for our city. If we don't make these plans for our city, developers will come in and make them for us. So, you'll notice that on the agenda, it says discussion of resolution, it does not say action. It's important that we start these conversations, there's no time better to start than now when development is ramping back up. If council is able to entertain a moratorium or a, a pause in Ward 1 only, that's fine. It seems that Ward 1 is getting most of the requests and most of the applications submitted. Don't want to hurt anything that's already in the pipeline, want to keep that going, those people have paid their fees to pull permits and variances and such. So, I would love to see council and planning and zoning work together, and go through these documents, and make adjustments. I'd like to see us work together as a committee, maybe form a committee, and have a builder represented, residents, planning and zoning, put our heads together and get this done, and make a true plan for our city, and stop letting things just come in and where they may not make quite as much sense as we'd like.
Okay, anyone else? I was to Estes.
Yeah, I appreciate the, the comments, I think, you know, one of my, my struggles is that I keep going back to the 2040 plan, you know, as we think about what's our strategy for, for housing and development, you know, I, I keep using this as a, as a kind of a Bible right now, a strategic plan, and, and one of the things that is, is a concern potentially is that I, I feel like there's a lot of consistency around what are we doing for housing and development, and it, and it over indexes a little bit for Ward 2 downtown. I was thinking about this earlier, if someone was to ask me what the strategy is for Ward 1 or Ward 3, I don't know if I could really answer that accurately, and, and so, I, I definitely want to balance the, the external view that we are, that we are closed for business, the word moratorium starts, feels sometimes to me like a swear word, you know, it's, it has different connotations for, for, depending on the person, but I do think that, kind of my comments earlier about what's the strategy, I'd, I'd love to see us sit down and, and, and really partner with the planning and zoning committee, you know, just share feedback and thoughts, you know, they're, they're constantly be, you know, involved in, in, in these discussions, hearing feedback, I'm sure getting feedback from developers, and, and we do as well as, as council members, and so, so again, trying to share all that out, that feedback together and come back as a, as a cohesive represent, representation of, of Canton, and then kind of be able to march forward and say, you know, this is, this is what makes sense. I'd also echo what Ms. McGrew said, it does feel like with, with kind of the dialogue here, and the, and the current resolution being State Route 140, and, and a lot of the, the new development is coming into Ward 1, that if, if it was, I, I'd hate to put a moratorium on the entire city, if it's Ward 1, you know, I'd love to get feedback from citizens broadly, and just understand where the, the real issues are and complaints. And so, so again, I, I mean, we're not making, I, I agree, I hope we're not doing any action tonight, but it would be good to, to continue to get feedback here, and, and again, push forward to, to, you know, everyone hates more meetings, but I think in this case, it's good to tap the brakes and, and, and create some, some more dialogue collectively with, with city staff, with, with developers, and, and just be able to say that, you know, we're, we're setting the table for what our vision is, and then inviting others to come along, and then it's clear.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Yawn?
I would agree with much of what my colleagues just said, I do feel that the way it's stated, this moratorium is way too broad. I like the idea of putting a committee together to have a discussion and go through the plan, and try to come up with a cohesive plan involving developers and citizens and council and staff. I think that is a really good idea, and something I would like to see us pursue. I feel like right now, even in Ward 1, all we have to do is say no. If someone comes with a plan that does not seem to fit with what is If someone comes with a plan that does not seem to fit with what is, can, infrastructure can handle, we just have to say no. We have to be more willing to say no. I think we've proven we are more willing than we used to be, or that councils used to be to say no when something comes along that we don't feel fit. But also we need to provide guidelines to developers so they know what's even worth proposing. If they know that it's something that there's no way we'll probably ever approve, then we don't wanna waste their time and money putting stuff together and making applications and sending, um, requests in that we're not going to, they know we probably wouldn't approve. So we need to do, need to get something in place to give them guidance. Because even just getting something to the planning commission is expensive. And by the time they get it to us, it is, they've really spent a lot of money. So I wanna make sure that they don't waste that money on a pros, proposal that we don't wanna approve. Uh, but they need, we need to figure out what we want. So yes, I think putting a commission together is a great idea. And I, we just have to trust with our, uh, development department and with our engineers to tell us when we've hit max. And say, yeah, we've, we can do this, but no more. And, uh, I think we are still have room and we don't wanna stifle any creativity. Someone can come up with the greatest project that ever existed, it's something that none of us ever thought of. But we want to be o, open to taking those ideas. But we also do need to put some structure and guidance in place, so I think that is a good idea.
I was looking in my phone while we were talking for the allowable uses in Pod eighteen of Great Sky. And it's incredible what could have been built there. We would not have had any say-so over it. Trees would be falling left and right and they could put up a barber shop or a, uh, I don't, just things that just would not fit in a residential area. So I think we've got to do a study of our, we as a group have to look at our zonings and say, does this really work anymore?
We probably need to look at some kind of sunsetting on some of these master plans that were approved twenty years ago that really have no place in our city anymore, have no, like you say, we lost the Northern Ark, we lost Canton West. That all these developments were built around, so yeah, we need to rethink what was approved back then. That is one of the things we do need to look at, yes.
Okay. Anyone else?
I have a clarification question. So we've been talking in past meetings about, uh, the Harris project and the parking deck and potential for, for apartments there. That's a master plan, correct? That was submitted for that?
No.
Not parking deck.
In fact, there has never been a master plan submitted on that site. There has been, there has been a site plan submitted showing the existing parking and the Panera, but there has never been a master plan submitted for that entire site, including additional acreage.
Once, once they expand to something else.
Right.
So if this went, if this moratorium were to go through, as written, it would create, um, that would put the brakes on?
Well, as written, it would put the brakes on it because they'd have to have a conditional use permit for apartments. And that's one of the items listed in here is the CUP.
Okay.
They have to come forward about the CUP anyway, since it's apartments.
That's great, that's great.
I, I wanted to confirm what, uh, Mr. Peppers has said, uh, there has not been a master plan submitted. The commercial development that has taken place on the old Board of Education property is on Central Business District. Residential along, uh, Academy, Hill Street, Hill Street Circle, that is on Central Business District. There, it would require a master plan to be, uh, submitted, uh, for, uh, any type of residential, uh, component with that. For the attached units, it would, uh, also require a conditional use permit approval.
Thank you.
Can we strengthen our requirements about clearcutting? Can we restrict clearcutting of neighborhoods? And I understand if the answer's no, but...
Well, we have, uh, tree protection regulations in place now. In which they have to do a tree count and a tree survey prior to any grading. They have to do recompensation for, uh, trees that are taken out part of, of that tree survey. They do get credit for trees that, uh, do remain. But, uh, trees within, uh, buffer areas are not counted, uh, as a part of, uh, what they get credit for.
If I could make a comment on that too. You know, so many of the developments that come into the city wanna maximize the number of lots that they can get on an acre. You know, if, if we had folks that were coming in that wanted to build acre lots, there wouldn't be a need to clearcut many of them. But, you know, that's not what the development community necessarily wants to pitch. They wanna pitch dense construction, maximize profit of land value. And, you know, we, aside from, Mr. Patton and I were talking about this, is really aside from Rose Ridge neighborhood, we don't have anything in the city of any large lot sizing. And that's why you've got the clearcutting. You, you simply have to do it to get that many lots in on an acre.
And if I might, uh, add, uh, comment, and I'll probably get raked over the coals by some builders and developers, that sort of thing, but I'm sort of used to it. But, uh, yes, they wanna maximize, uh, their density, maximize, uh, their profits. With the collapse of the construction industry in two thousand eight, a lot of the independent, independent home builders or what some folks will call the mom and pop home builder went away. Most of the residential construction taking place today is with national tract home builders. They have, uh, pushed residential construction to, for the most part, small postage stamp lots and build a slab house. Uh, it's a quicker, easier production, higher rate of turnover. So they maximize their profits, less construction time, that sort of thing.
Okay. Anyone else? Well, you know, I think that we may have missed an opportunity in the past that the fact that may have resulted or could have resulted in maybe, uh, avoiding this particular, uh, issue. As most of you know that I've, I've talked to, uh, I had, over the last few years, I have, uh, felt like the city needed to, uh, try to work with the Cherokee County Water and Sewage Authority. And because we are completely surrounded there by them, that's all they do. And we probably wouldn't be looking to issue the kind of debt that we're gonna be issuing over the next five to ten years, uh, if, if, if we did that. And, and there's still an inequity there that has, this really kinda gnaws at me. And that is, that is some of our residents are paying twenty percent almost less for water and almost fifty percent less for sewer than other city residents. And I understand why because it's a different system. Because the Cherokee Water and Sewer Authority is providing certain areas of the city with water and sewer. And the city of Canton is providing, uh, the majority of it with, with water and sewer. But there's just something inherently wrong to me that some of our residents are paying more than other, other residents. But I think that we may be missing a real opportunity and I hope down the road and in the future that the council will take a more serious look at that. In fact, take a look at it because, uh, it's gotten a very cool response and in the discussion, relative to, you know, at least even considering and trying to work with the Water and Sewer Authority to come up with something that would work for us. With all the debt we've got to issue in the future, that this city will issue in the future, sure would be good to have a much larger customer base. In fact, their customer base is ten times our customer base. So, you know, it certainly makes sense to me and I, normally when I talk to citizens, the feedback's been very positive that, you know, maybe that's what you ought to do. But we're even, and I, I'm repeating myself, but you're gonna have to bear with it because I got the microphone for a minute here, anyway. But we're even, we're even, uh, you know, taking monies from our Water and Sewer Department and putting in the general fund and have for the last two years. And here we are with a moratorium and a potential water and sewer crisis, uh, uh, just kinda hanging over us here. So I think that, you know, from the moratorium standpoint, I, you know, I think, I, I understand what's coming from. I'm not sure what will be different April the fifteenth of twenty twenty than is currently the case. And, and the reason is because in twenty, uh, uh, twenty and April fifteenth, I believe the, the resolution says that they'll have ninety percent of the design for a, a new plant. Well, design, you can't, you can't run sewage through a design, you know? You don't have to, um, and, and you're still talking about at least a couple of years after that before you could have a plant on the ground functioning. So you're gonna be in the same situation anyway. And had, had we looked seriously at working with the water authority, we, we really gave them no, uh, you know, I talked to them on numerous occasions. But I did so in an attempt to fill them out as to whether they would, might be receptive of any discussion with us about that. And I think they would have been. But I didn't get that feeling from the, from the council and I'm sure they didn't either, that there was a strong interest in doing anything like that. And it may not be. But I can tell you, it, it makes sense to me to, to do something like that, uh, because water and sewer is all they do. We do a lot more than water and sewer here. Recreation, you know, planning and zoning, roads, everything, you know, we do. But that's all that they do. And I gotta tell you, they do a good job on it. I served on that board for eight years back in the eighties and, uh, they're really apolitical. I mean, they, they will provide the sewer where it's needed in a, in a fashion that we do, sort of, basically. I mean, they don't, they don't say, hey, I'm not gonna run it out to this guy because we don't like him, you know? I mean, if it makes sense, they do it, you know? So we might not, had we been able to move in that direction a couple of years ago or so, we may not be here talking about this today. So anyway, uh, that, that's, that's my soapbox, so we'll, we'll move on. Anyone else have anything they wanna talk about on this?
Yes.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you for your input, everyone. I'd like to see this on the agenda for the next work session for further discussion and public input.
Okay. That's, it sounds good. All right. Mr. Peppers, city manager.
I just have two items tonight. First, I wanted to, and there's actually a picture of it up there. I wanted to let you know, we're, um, we're working on a project right now to rehab some of the decking on the bridge between Heritage and Edouard River, uh, Park. They have completed most of the decking work. I think it's probably gonna be uh, as we finalize some of that. I would make note that it's probably gonna be several weeks before we come back and stain the new wood. We wanna make sure it gets accustomed before we actually do the staining. So, uh, we'll be opening it up probably the middle of next week and then at some point in close it for a day or two while we, while we restain. There are barrels and cones and fencing letting you know not to cross it. And unfortunately, we still have some residents think they wanna cross it, but there are some boards missing. And so it's important that the public heed the warnings that are out there. The second thing, uh, Mr. Patton and I are, uh, finalizing a draft of the, uh, RFP for a housing study. That will be coming to council in October, uh, for your consideration. And so I know that's one of the things that you specifically asked for and we're excited to be able to present to you. So maybe that can be part of your discussion and look through in, in the next meeting. That's all the, uh, information I have on additional items unless you have any questions for me.
What, what is the, the current status of the, uh, deck that they were looking at, the Harris group was looking at?
I believe we had an initial phone call, maybe, are, are you talking about the Clark Patterson design or are you talking about the Harris design?
I'm talking about the Harris design right now.
So we had a phone call maybe about a week and a half ago and it sounded at the time Harris wanted to be on the agenda for tonight. And then he called back and said, no, he would come back at a later date, um, at the work session on October third. We, as a staff, have had no communications with him on the project.
What about the Clark Patterson design?
Uh, Clark Patterson has been doing, uh, soil samples, uh, this week. They did some boring samples right here in the area where the deck would be to, to get information on the soils and rock and what have you. And so we should be moving forward with more information after those samples.
So I've, I've seen some of the holes out there they've been doing the samples with. You know, here's my thought. I don't wanna see us slow down on our progress toward that parking deck at this location down here. And I feel like that maybe by our being either reserved or, or maybe just being nice to people, we may be jerking around that, uh, the developer because, uh, if, I don't know if the council, uh, would truly entertain a parking deck surrounded by apartments in which we would be paying, uh, money to do. And in fact, apparently more money than, uh, uh, per space, I guess, at least more than the proportionate amount that they were asking. I couldn't get an answer at the last, last meeting. And so there's a lot of uncertainty there. I mean, I asked, are we talking about paying, the city paying, uh, a proportionate share of the cost based on the number of spaces that we would have? You know, I never got an answer. I said, would it be more or could it be more or could it be less? Well, never really got an answer except we ought to be happy that they're doing something that's going to allegedly bring more people downtown. Well, happy about that. We're getting people downtown and we're gonna get more people downtown, there's no doubt about that. But I don't know, I feel uneasy about the thoughts of, of spending taxpayer dollars in conjunction in, in an area that is completely surrounded by apartments. Uh, I, I just don't really feel good about that. But, so I guess, I guess my, my question here is, do we want to continue to have them spend a lot of money and working out, uh, a proposal for us while we are moving full speed ahead for a deck down the street here? Or do we want to be honest about it if, if that's the way we feel and, and say, look, we're gonna build this deck down here and, uh, you know, we appreciate what y'all are looking at and all that, but, uh, that's just, that's just my question.
One possibility that I would suggest to you is if, if you would like, since we know that Mr. Harris has reached out and said that he wants to look at the October third agenda, if council has specific questions that they would like Mr. Harris to address, if you'll email me those questions, I'll send them to him and say, you know, just so you know, on October third, you're gonna be asked these specific questions and council would like some specific answers to these questions, be prepared for that.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Estes?
Yeah, just, I mean, I certainly don't wanna speak for, for Mr. Harris, but, um, and his intentions on timing. But I know that when I had a chance to meet with him and Mr. Good, the feedback I got was, um, that, you know, the, or I guess the feedback I provided was devil's in the details, right? You know, that everything that they were saying, uh, that they were presenting was, you know, there were no personally for me red flags going up yet. You know, they were kinda checking all the boxes, you know, again, I keep going back to the, the twenty forty, right? They were going through, hitting all the, the big high points around housing needs, parking deck. And, um, and, and so, I, I don't know, I, I, my only concern was that I guess I only thought that there were two options for a parking deck. One was the old police station potentially or next, next door here. And I didn't realize that they had presented ideas, um, he, here. And, uh, and, and so, so again, I was just more, I'm, I'm still open to, you know, I keep hearing feedback that, that we do want beds downtown. We do wanna have this atmosphere of live, work, play. And, and so I think that... And, and so I think that, you know, my, my position would be, I'd love to keep hearing more from, from them. I think we don't slow down the work that Clark Patterson Lee is doing, but instead let them come together and now we've got more data points to understand. But, but I think part of the feedback to, to Mr. Harris and Mr. Good would be that, and we'll submit some stuff to you, but it should be, hey, what's, what's that next layer down? You know, they've, they've got a lot of details that they've said that they'd like to pull together. It's just, they're trying, I think of it as a funnel, you know, they started really wide. Do you even want to do this? Okay, it sounds, it sounds like, keep going. It was then, all right, here's some more specifics, we're starting to lay some stuff out, does this still sound palatable? Okay, now here's some costs that we bring and similar what Clark Patterson Lee did. That, that would be my interpretation of what the next step should be from, from Mr. Harris and Mr. Good. And again, I haven't seen anything from them that, that created any red flags.
But you think, I just wonder if we should continue to pump money into this parking deck down on the corner here while at the same time considering that we may abandon that for maybe years and go with a parking deck at these apartments? My feeling is, is that if apartments are going to work, and I believe they probably will here, I mean, they can build a deck too for those apartments. And we can have city parking on the corner down here. But, you know, I mean, I would assume that they would need to build a parking deck for their apartments anyway. And so just because the city didn't get involved with it, that shouldn't have anything to do with the marketability of those apartments. There's something else there that we're not seeing, and I'm just afraid that, you know, if we, that we may be actually costing them money as, as we proceed full speed ahead with this. And I'm, I'm not opposed to listening to them, certainly, and I think we have, but I'm kind of concerned about, you know, them spending a lot of money doing something, designing everything, and, and then the next thing, you know, if, if the council could say, okay, we'll go with it, but they might also say, no, we're not interested in doing that. And so, I mean, that's just a chance they take, I guess. Mr. Goodwin?
One thing we still need to remember is 135 of those spaces are already ours. So, you know, when we do these numbers, we need to remember that. In their deal, when they purchased that, we got 130, I think it's 136.
125.
125, and then the next thing I heard was 136. So 125 to 136, wherever the number is, those spaces are already ours. So it might not be such a good deal if you do the numbers. However, I'll agree, it's, it sounds like a wonderful thing and if you can get down to the next level down there easily without having to go down this hill and up that hill, it might work really well for the city. I'd like to hear it, the full thing, but I think we need to make a decision fairly quick because I feel kind of bad about Clark Patterson Lee doing all this work and we might not end up using them. It seems like it's a, a lot of work that might not come to pass for them.
Okay. That was just a question ahead.
So if you think of any questions, you want to submit them to me, I'm happy to get those over to the work session. Any other, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. That's all we have, except for we need to adjourn to executive session to discuss potential litigation. Do I have a motion to do that?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Goodwin made the motion. Mr. Yawn seconded the motion. Any other questions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. We will not be coming back out to vote on anything.